Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Mrs. Antilek Everett.
Here.
Mrs. Gadston.
Here.
Mrs. Galbo.
Excused.
Mr. Garnett.
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Excused.
Ms. Patton.
Excused.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Zoff.
Excused.
Mrs. Thompson.
I'm here. Dr. Walkley, would you go over the fire exits?
The fire exits, there is one to the left of me and one against this wall to the right.
Thank you.
We have a motion for executive session.
Why don't you go to executive session to talk about particular, uh...
Individual.
Individual.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board will return as soon as possible.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a whole host of people here for several different presentations for our workshop. And the first presentation is going to be about an integrated curriculum project that Mrs. Kellogg has been working with some of the high school teachers with. So I'm going to turn over to Mrs. Kellogg, who's going to introduce this piece of the workshop.
I'll move over to the microphone. That's okay. It is with great pleasure that I... Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you today, this evening, members of the Beacon High School Arts Department along with representatives from the DIA. They participated and collaborated together on a project-based learning experience for our high school students that was really profound, I feel, and very, very compelling. And I'm not going to say too much about it. It's called a listening experience. But I'd like to introduce Claudine Farley, who is our art content coordinator. Megan Matty-Lee is a representative from the DIA along with her colleague Alex Margot. We have Mike Gersh here this evening, who worked with these teachers with his video presentation, and Sergio Perez, one of our art teachers at the high school as well. So I'm going to turn the table over to these fine people to give you a little glimpse of what happened at the DIA not too long ago. So we'll be showing you the video in just a minute, but before the video, I just wanted to explain a little bit of the process that we did prior to seeing the video so you kind of understand what exactly happened. We started the project last year. Megan and I met up and decided that we've been working with, we were trying to decide about 15 years now, we've been working with the DIA. We work at all grades, levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And we really wanted to relook at the high school program. So when we did that, we decided that we really wanted to have a lot of teacher input at this point in time. So we did a workshop for the superintendent conference days. We all went over to the DIA along with other teachers as well. We had music, we had chorus, we had ESL teachers, we had science teachers. So we really opened it up and really made it an exploration for the teachers and had them explore the space and came up with concepts and lessons that they could use that space, the DIA, as a learning-based museum, not just something that you walk in and say, "Oh, yeah, okay, that's that." You know, we really wanted to make it so the interaction between us would start to develop even more so than what we had. We walked away with actually having some grade lessons and the ESL teacher came in and actually did a lesson. And this is one of the lessons that we came up with and it became this whole, a full project. Steve Patrowski, our band teacher, actually started the project with going into a space called the Solawitz Drawings. And he looked at it as music on the walls. And from there, we all came back down and we all sat and we brainstormed for a while. And he said to one of us, "Wouldn't it be great if we could play music inside the Richard Sarah pieces based off of Solawitz pieces?" And that just kind of cued something. And we didn't think it was possible, so, because they're million-dollar pieces. We're like, "How are you going to let kids just play music in there?" But with a lot of help from Megan, we were able to work it out. So it took some time and it took a lot of field trips and it took a lot of partnering back and forth between them. And I'm just going to hand out, and I have a couple extra I'm going to put up there. We actually had several teachers, and we'll be off the teachers, but then we had students as well. This is the list. So we had over 30 people involved in the end. So obviously, I was one of the teachers, I'm art teacher at the high school. Mike Gersh, we had Mark Lyons, and he worked particularly with our AP program, which is our advanced kids. And then we also had Sergio, who was in there. Then we had Steve Patrowski, and we had Maureen Stickney, who is our chorus teacher. So those teachers all together came up and then worked with all the students together. We also had four alumni that came back just to do the process with us. They were away at college. They literally came home that weekend to come and do the work with us, which was just fabulous. And then the list of students is there as well. So from there, we came up with a project based off the concept of listening and responding to the sounds and creating artwork off of that. And the sounds and the music was all choreographed and created by the students themselves. The artwork also is created all by the students themselves. And what you'll see is the video based on that day. It was a one-day art experience. They played music inside and then they also sang inside the Richard Sarahs. And then in response to that, people had big banners laid out that they responded in drawing. And at first, we were concerned that we weren't going to be able to get the community to be involved. Well, that wasn't the case. They were ready, drawing before the music even started. They were, I mean, everybody was just really involved that day. The kids came, they came dressed to the nines. Not one of them didn't have to worry about what they were doing or touching or anything. They were, they had a mission. When you see the video, people are smiling and laughing and just really enjoying the experience. It's unfortunate that we didn't have more people, but you'll see in the video the response that we did get, that people really enjoyed. The kids at the end just felt so accomplished. And I think for us, that was, our main goal was to show them what they could do outside of just, you know, in school and making a painting and hanging it on the wall. There's so much more to it than just that. And a huge thank you to the DIA and working with the DIA for all these years and what they do for us in the community at large. Do you want to say something before we show?
Why don't we show the video?
Okay, so we're going to show the video. Is this going to be remotely done for you?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's about three minutes long and hopefully you'll get a sense of the experience that we had that day. ...that's active for continued learning for the entire community. We have our arts education program coming up with the spring, so we'll be working more extensively with elementary schools and middle schools. This program was featured at our last Community Free Day and our next one is coming up in January. Those are quarterly. It's really great to have such a fantastic partnership one day there. We also want to highlight our team program. We have several, excuse me, several Beacon City School District high school students participating. And just a friendly reminder that DIA Beacon is free for Beacon residents on weekends, so we hope to see y'all when we're there. So if, you know, the video is one thing, but the artwork is actually hanging up in the gallery right now, so I would love for you guys, if you had a chance, to stop by the gallery and just look at it. It's beautiful. You'll see some of the photographs from that day and also some of the pre-work up to that day. So it wasn't just that day. We took a lot of time and effort to get there, too. And then just a little plug, we have another art show this weekend at the Allen Library. It's this Saturday, opening 2/2/4, so. Thanks.
Our second presentation this evening is going to be Mr. Brian Archer, and he is presenting his school's local assistance plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to recognize the folks from DIA. Our second graders had a great experience working with all the folks from DIA last year, and I can reiterate that, and would like to continue that as well. When we talk about our local assistance plan, the first thing that I think about is collaboration with our teachers, with all of our faculty, and with the school board as well, because we need your support to continue our good work that we started last year with the first year of our LAP plan. This is year number two of our LAP plan. To let the school board know, last year, Sargent Elementary was cited for ELA and Math academic performance with our subgroups, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and our Hispanic subgroup as well. From the first year of the LAP plan to this current year, which is based on last year's standardized testing data, we're cited this year for Math academic performance with our students with disabilities. So there's good, positive academic improvement at Sargent Elementary. And I do have to say, the accolades have to go to our students, our parents, and our teachers. So I couldn't do any of this without their work and their sincere efforts. The process that we undertook with our LAP plan, it began this year with a conversation I had with Mr. Bob England. He's from the RSC Task. And the conversation centered around what we did last year and what we need to do differently this year. And the concept that we're thinking the most about is how we as educators engage our students in more profound ways, getting kids to think critically, to own the learning. Then, from that point, we organized a LAP team, and that LAP team consisted of Ms. Kellogg, two teachers, a parent, and psychologist, and a teaching assistant. And we met three times between the end of September and this past Friday, where we finalized the LAP plan that I hope is in front of you. And we also surveyed students, teachers, and parents, and we used data from different sources as well, which includes the standardized testing and includes some of the behavioral data that we were looking at last year as well. Some of the trends that we have noted in our LAP plan is that our students made good academic improvements. That's a trend that we saw and we hope to continue. The staff sincerely addressed the points from the 2014-15 LAP plan, and we're going to sincerely address the points we're looking at again. Again, the most important conceptual change in this LAP plan from last year is how we engage kids and teachers act as facilitators. I also want to recognize that the professional developments, which were part of the LAP plan last year and again are part of this year's LAP plan, as well as PBIS, those were profound positive impacts at Sargent Elementary. And we added, you know, thanks to the push from Dr. Walkley, Steph Harvey, the ALVEAS, those are important pieces of work that fit into our recruitment plans for this year as well. And what I will say, the big area of improvement that we are working on is how we engaged and increased our parent involvement. I've had the opportunity to attend PTO meetings, and our PTO meetings have a lot more attendance. And I'm told by our PTO president and vice president that we're getting a lot more support and work from parents as well. So we are seeing lots of nice trends. And the pro-social trends from kids, we're not seeing as many kids come to my office this year, so we're seeing a lot of good work being done. Mike, we have questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, you said that the current issue is students with disabilities related to math, right?
Correct.
So the plan to address that is?
Well, we're looking at everything as a whole going into helping kids do better on the math testing. What we're looking at is really trying to engage the kids in becoming better readers and strategy purveyors on these tests. And when we talk about our recruitment plan, we are talking about trying to get these kids to do better on these tests. And a lot of that is about test-taking strategies, it's about critical thinking, it's about math literacy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our third and final piece of the workshop this evening is Mr. Brian Saltish, and tonight he is also sharing his local assistance plan. These two plans have to be posted on the website by a certain date, and this is the board meeting to do that. And it is also Mr. Saltish's night.
Can I just hear a minute?
No. Mr. Brian Saltish is our third presenter. He is presenting also his local assistance plan. And the reason that there are the two presentations this evening is that we need to post them on the website by a certain date, and this is the board meeting that we need to do that. Mr. Saltish, it's also his lucky draw that it is his, it's his night to talk about his building plan. So he's going to talk about his local assistance plan and his building plan. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with my local assistance plan. Last year, we were actually in good standing, and this year, we do have a local assistance plan. It's based on our performance on the eighth-grade science test. And one of the tough factors on that is we had a much smaller participation this past year on our science test, and possibly that could be the reason that we have fallen into that trap there. So what I'd like to do is just give you an idea of who worked together to create the plan, and also some of the highlights inside of the plan that we're looking to do throughout the year this year. So the team we put together consisted of all three building administrators. We also had Mrs. Kellogg from central office. We had Bob England from the RC Task, as well as both our guidance counselors and our school librarians. So that was the team that got together to begin formalizing the plan. The plan, after it was formalized, has also been reviewed with our school improvement team, which is a committee of teachers within the building, as well as the LAP team, and as well as our PTO president, Wendy Manning. So some of the highlights in our plan and things that we looked at for our plan, we did look at data, we had the ALVEAS survey that we did at the end of last year for both students and staff. We also looked at our testing results. We looked at our DTSD survey, as well as observations that we had made throughout the year, state testing results. We all went into what we did. So some of our highlighted things that we'll be doing this year, we, each administrator within the building will be conducting walkthroughs that are now related to the APPR process, and we're expecting ourselves to do eight hours each month. And those walkthroughs, we're targeting certain aspects each month that we make the teachers aware of, and then we're providing feedback to them at the end of each month, letting them know what we saw and anything that we'd like to improve on. We're also making a strong effort this year to send out bilingual communication as much as possible, as that's an area that we feel is important to our community, and we would like to make an improvement there. So our first notice that went home this year at the Five of Report, we did have a bilingual communication regarding honor roll on that mail, and we will look to continue to do that throughout the year. Our school improvement team is working to revise our current mission statement. We'd like to align it a little bit more with the board and the district to make sure that we're taking a good look at what we are trying to achieve at the middle school. We also have our ALVEAS anti-bullying program, which we plan to kick off in January, and that is going to focus on the anti-bullying and having students in groups to really work together with their teachers, and that will begin in January. Our data team, which Mrs. Orsner runs, will be focusing on student data trends as well as looking at our local assessments that will be conducted at the end of the year. We will be conducting weekly support team meetings every Friday. Those meetings will have all three administrators, our school social worker, our psychologists, both guidance counselors will be at those to discuss any student issues that we may be running into. We're very happy, it's part of our plan, but it's very easy to accomplish because it was already in place, but Parent Portal being open from the start of the school year is really going to be an asset for parents and teachers to work together, so we're pleased with that. We are providing our staff training, RTI intervention and prevention. We'll be doing that through conference days as well as faculty meetings. And we are participating with our ELA and social studies teachers in the Steph Harvey literacy initiative. They were already here this past week for their first round of demo lessons, and the feedback we got from our staff was very positive. It was a great experience for a lot of them to be able to sit in with their coworkers and watch the lesson and then be able to have a debrief on that where they could speak for about 45 minutes about what was going on. So those are some of the key highlights within the point. Any questions?
I have a question. Did you, maybe I didn't hear correctly, did you say that the science test was largely due to the numbers? Do we have less people taking?
What I said was, we had a lot of students opt out this past year of our science test, and historically, we've done well on our science test. So a possibility of why we may have been... So a possibility of why we may have been cited there is that we didn't have the normal number of students taking it that we would traditionally have. I don't know that for a fact, and there's no way of saying that's definitely the reason. But every year, we typically do really well on that test. And last year, we had a high number of students choose not to take that test. And we were cited for our performance on that test. So in my mind, I think there's probably a good connection there. But I don't have any factual back that up. Do you want? Good. Good on questions? All right. I'm now going to move on since I covered both things that we're doing in the building, the LAP plan. A lot of what I'll do next will be more of a building update for you. Some of the things we've had going on recently to give you an idea. In starting my building plan, I would like to address one thing real quick. RMS participated in Say Something Week by having our ELA teachers show a two-minute video and go over PowerPoint. I am aware that some parents are not pleased that they were not given advance notice. And also that a few teachers had showed an additional video because they thought it was part of the material. This was not my intent, and in the future, we will notify parents prior to presenting this type of material. The main idea is for students, parents, and family members to report any signs of threat, weapons, violence, or disruptive behavior before something negative occurs. It is a serious and difficult topic in today's day and age. We cannot afford to ignore it. We must empower our students to reach out for help and say something when they notice the warning signs. It very well could make the difference. So we did do that about a week and a half ago. Also recently, around the same time, we had our Spirit Week, which was hosted by our student council. And that was a very exciting time in the building. That was October 26th through October 30th. Every day, we had a dress-up day to give you an idea of what our days were. We had, Monday was pajama day. Tuesday was, and the kids do love wearing their pajamas since the rules are they can't wear them on a normal day. Tuesday was twin day, which we get twins, triplets, you name it, they have it. Wednesday, we had pro and college sports day. Thursday, we did blue and gold day and had our pep rally. The reason we did that on a Thursday was our football team had an away game that day. And we thought it would be a nice send-off to them at the end of the day before they got on the bus. And Friday was crazy dress day. The Thursday pep rally was a very exciting event. We do call all our teams down, all the students down by name. Our band is playing as the students enter the gymnasium, so it's very exciting. We have a tradition of a pie-in-the-face foul shot contest that we do. So we had approximately 14 students shoot a foul shot. We had students from each grade level. And if they make their foul shot, they have the opportunity to pie a teacher or administrator in the face with a whipped cream pie. However, that person has to be participating in the event. And we also have the same number of staff members get to take a foul shot. And if they make their foul shot, they get the opportunity to pie either a staff member or one of the participating students with a whipped cream pie. So that is a big hit. We had approximately four students and four staff members make their shots. This is the first year that I did not get pieced in the face, which I was very happy about. My other administrators did not make it out so well. And new to our event this year, we had a dunk tank in the gymnasium. We had a pool underneath it and lots of rubber matting below that to make sure the floor is protected. But we had a dunk tank that the City of Beacon was kind enough, the fire department came in and filled it with some water out of the fire hydrant. I was thinking that that water was gonna be nice and clear, but it was not as nice and clear as we had originally thought it might be. And it was ice cold. And we did have 10 staff members volunteer to sit on the platform. And all 10 of those staff members ended up in the water, whether the bullseye was hit or whether a teacher hit the bullseye from behind while they weren't looking. With the dunk tank, we tied in our PBIS committee. We do what we call pride pause. And we were giving out pride pause for appropriate hallway behavior. So we collect those. The students get a pride pause based on how they're conducting themselves in the hallway. And the students that were collecting the most pride pause during Spirit Week, those were the students that were called out to take the shots at the bullseye. So they knew they were gonna get a special award at the pep rally based on the number of pride pauses they got. So we brought out, I think about 15 students to throw at the bullseye. And they all had opportunities, and many of them sunk us, including myself, into the ice cold water. So I would like to thank the City of Beacon Fire Department. And also Camp Green would donate us a large rubber mat to put underneath it. So I really appreciate those organizations helping us out. The next thing I would like to go through is we have an amazing art department at Rom Bell Middle School. And Mrs. Berserka, who's outstanding, this is her final year. And we're gonna truly miss her when she's gone with the work that she does. So she so graciously put something together for me. This project is one of the projects she does with the students. And I would like to take a few moments to explain the project and what it is that she does. So what she does is students are asked to define collaboration and how it relates to art. Student discussion revolved around ideas of working together, communication, respect, and trust. The rules of collaboration were established. So students began their project by designing the feet of their pet. So each student designs the feet. They then pass their drawings clockwise. Students discussed ideas for each other's drawings. After reaching consensus, they drew the legs. So one student draws the feet, they pass it to the next student, and that next student draws the legs. They continue this process for the torso, for the arms, for the head. And then it goes back to the original person. And the original person draws their own faces, details, and applies concepts in color and painting to finish their fabulous pets. The students enjoyed working together and shared many ideas in a respectful manner. The artwork was displayed in a group in the hallway, furthering the idea that we all work together as part of the school community. So if you wanted me to pass this around, I just think, when you see the wall in our building, there must be 50 or 60 of these up there. And it just truly is amazing to look at when you're in the hallway. So again, the work that she does into decorating our school is truly amazing. There's other samples of a different project. I would like to have brought them here tonight, but it would have required a very, very large canvas. So I was unable to do that. And the last thing I wanted to make people aware of is something that happens yearly at Rom Bell Middle School. And I'd like to recognize them for it. And that's the Elks Club. Every year at this time of year, the Elks Club comes into our school. So they've been in contact with us to set a meeting. They meet with our sixth graders each year. And they award each sixth grade student a thesaurus. And they kind of talk about the purpose of the thesaurus and what to do. But I just think it really is nice for an organization to come into the building and give something to the students that they can use and present them. So I just want to acknowledge them for that. And does anyone have any questions on what's happening right now?
That concludes the workshop. Okay. I'll quickly review the agenda. We'll have student and school presentations, parent groups.
Excuse me, is there any chance if we keep the mic a little closer to the room? I'm sorry, it's really hard.
Any better?
Not much.
Not much?
Bring it close.
Then it's on top of my book. Is it any better?
Yeah.
That's better.
All right. I'll try hard to remember to face it. Okay. So we'll begin with our student and school presentations. But now I hear feedback. Do you guys hear that?
Yeah.
So what's the option to get rid of that? Okay. We'll have parent groups open to the public, superintendent's report. We'll have our board comments, including committee reports. We'll have the consent agenda. We have a couple of addendums. We will not be using a second executive session. We will then adjourn the meeting. There are a couple corrections I want to note. On the instructional personnel list 10.04, we're removing item F, which was to appoint teachers for an after-school program. We're also removing 10.15, which is to approve an SMOA with the BTA. And then our addendums. 11.01 is the addendum to the instructional personnel. 11.02 is the agreement with Carley's Crusade. And 11.03, which is an agreement with Engineering by Design. Do we have any students or school presentations tonight?
Hi there. I'm Franca Kersis. We are the National Honor Society of Beacon High School. I am the co-advisor, came from last year. And I want to introduce my new co-advisor, Mike Kirsch.
Here you go.
Mike Kirsch is helping me this year. It's been a great year. We have a lot of students. One of the things that I tried to do is get as many students as I could tonight to represent. But unfortunately, one of the things you get to be on the Honor Society is you have a lot of extracurricular activities. And this is what we were able to bring about. And I'm grateful for the three students that are here. And I'd like them to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Desan Carter. I'm the president of the National Honor Society.
I'm Colin Batterby, and I'm treasurer of the National Honor Society.
I'm Brandon Johnson, and I'm president of the board.
Brandon's also part of the honor committee as well.
We're here to talk about, we're here to talk about Project Hope, which is a project we do in coordination with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. And Project Hope, the H-O-P-E, stands for Helping Other People Excel. And the plan, or what they've asked us to do, and we've been doing together for about eight years now, is replenish 14 food pantries around the Hudson Valley. Unfortunately, we did lose one pantry, dropped out because they lost function. They ended up not having any more people on their committee. And we were down to 13 food pantries in the Hudson Valley. But so far, with the help of having every school district, every school in the district participate, we already received 185 items from Sargent School. And they said they're still collecting more. And the BTA has gathered round to get teachers to donate 50 cans from each one of the schools, or 50 items from each one of the schools of particular kind. Last year, they did 100 items. This year, it's just down scaled a little bit because they also are donating the personal items that they collected from teachers. So from that, we also are doing a, actually I'll have Desan talk about the fundraiser we're doing within the school.
So we've basically made it into a competition where we've had all the classes go up against each other. So each class is required to bring in the maximum number of cans they can. And the class with the most cans at the end of the season, just before Thanksgiving, they receive an ice cream social. So we're just in the process of doing that. So the cans are still being collected. So we're collecting them from the classes, as well as the different schools and the different committees. We've also sent our letters to, or the process sends the letters out to Beacon organizations such as Walmart and Key Foods, asking them for their donations, as well as local churches.
Right now, the seniors are ahead. The freshmen are close behind the seniors. And the sophomores are right in front of the juniors, and then the juniors are last. But there's still a chance.
But that's basically why we came here tonight to talk about. The National Honor Society does peer tutoring as well. So there is a site on the Beacon website that says peer tutoring. Once you get into the National Honor Society site. So if you need any peer tutoring, we have a lot of qualified Honor Society students that can do that for you. And they get their service, community service hours for it.
Is that just for high school kids?
We actually got a third grader that needed help. So the only stipulation with that is the students will not be going into the homes. They will do it at public library, or preferably in our building here at the high school, at the library here, or with a teacher.
Sorry, one last thing. We'd just like to urge you all to bring in as many cans as possible. It is for a good cause after all. Thank you.
Do we have any parent groups tonight? Okay, open to the... Mrs. Gadsden, would you read our policy?
The Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings not to exceed 60 minutes. All speakers and meeting attendees are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, familiar statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice, as well as disruptive conduct, including calling out, will not be tolerated. Speakers may generally comment on any matter relating to district business. The president and/or the superintendent may respond to comments when all speakers have finished. There shall be no further public comment or dialogue regarding responses provided by the president and/or the superintendent. The rules applicable to such public comment are set forth in Board Policy 1230, a copy of which is available in the sign-up book at the front of this room and on the district's website. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Ann Sorillo?
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Sorillo, and I'm a physical education teacher at Sargent Elementary School. I have also taught PE classes at South Avenue, Forestville, and for two years at Rom Bell Middle School. I began my career in Beacon City School District in 1995, along with Campella and a number of new teachers at the time. For the first 14 years of my tenure here, I was a member of the BTA. For the first fourteen years of my tenure here, I was a member of the BTA, knowing little, if anything, about the union and its functions. At times I felt they were a group that worked independently and spoke unilaterally on behalf of the teachers without their input. I voted for leaders without knowing who they were, I did not have a copy of an actual contract. Union of Officers negotiated, settled grievances, and held brief meetings after faculty meetings, yet we were largely uninformed. One year we voted to take a zero percent increase in order to save positions, seeing no other option and not knowing how zero would affect us along the way. Gas went up, oil went up, food went up, and some teachers still lost their positions. Seven years ago, Kim Atwell was voted in as president of the BTA. Communication between the BTA and the membership was constant. Information was forthcoming regarding union business, contract information, health insurance costs and options, and supplemental positions such as IRP, chaperoning, and coaching. Members would become familiar with FMLA, which had long been a law, yet I had no idea what it stood for. Although I have not had any situation for which you need FMLA or a child during leave while here in the Beacon City School District, numerous other teachers have, and they have been informed of their rights and responsibilities in accordance with the laws by Kim and the BTA leadership team. While other districts went years without contracts, the BTA and the BCSD negotiated and settled three contracts. We had previously no option for flexible spending plan, no access to Aflac, and now a good portion of the membership takes advantage of these plans. Then came the Cuomo administration, the Common Core, the APPR, and all at once, education was in tumultuous time. Five superintendents have come and gone, along with numerous administrative and school board changes. As the changes took place, Kim was there collecting information and immediately sharing it with the members. Sometimes we had more information than anyone cared for, but one can always skip, read, or delete. It was imperative that the membership be kept informed of the changes, and how the laws and requirements from the state would affect our teaching, assessment, and ultimately how we would be evaluated. During Kim's time as president, the parent-teacher partnership was established, and the BTA Public Relations Committee was formed, thus encouraging teachers to become more active in the community. Was Kim Hill's presidency of the BTA perfect? Probably not, but historically, I doubt anyone's has been. Last August, Kim resigned as our union leader, at a time when it would go unnoticed by many, but it was due in part to the voices of some highly dissatisfied faculty members. Until now, I have neither seen nor heard a public statement of gratitude for all that has gone down since 2008. I stand before you tonight on behalf of all those who have benefited from the work of the BTA Representative Assembly and the leadership team, and to thank Kim for her service and tireless efforts on behalf of all BTA members, our students, and families in the BCSD. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Antelager, a grandparent in the community. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the petition that was started by Gretchen Larson-Walberg, I got it right, to ask the board to please look into why the teachers were dissatisfied, why morale seemed to be down. She was responding to the statement made the meeting before by the union president, John Burns. When the petition was started, it was started on October 25th, and up to about two days ago, there were two hundred signatures online. In the last forty-eight hours, there have been over a hundred more signatures online. And these are people that are basically, again, asking the board to please look into what has been going on. Some of the people that have signed this petition are from the city council, the mayor, Randy Casselli, Ward One, Peggy Ross, Ward Two, both Charlie Kelly and Omar Harper, Ward Three, Pam Weatherby, Ward Four, Ali Mohammed, at-large, George Mansfield, a past councilman, Justin Rigobano, a former board member, Larry Cohen, and obviously a lot of others have signed it. The petition was not meant to go viral or something, we have just posted it on the site where Beacon people would be looking at it. It could be, I think we would be getting almost triple the number of signatures if people were standing out at school with pickup and talking to parents about it, because I think parents basically really support the teachers. And the petition basically is saying that we would like the BOE to finally consider seriously the community request, that they look into the underlying cause for the current discontent. There are ethical concerns, and we look to the BOE to provide some leadership in this area. And I provide each of you, so you don't put home empty-handed tonight, with the petition. It's got the signatures, the comments will be read afterwards, and they can be looked at. The signatures can't be seen online, so we wanted you to have them here. Not all the signatures are on there, because this was printed before. Can I give them to you for the people that aren't here tonight? Thank you. And I would also like, John Burns, can I give you one also? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn Larson?
Hi, I just wanted to piggyback on Joan's comments and read a couple of the comments on the petition that really spoke to me. There were a lot of them, but just a few things, short and to the point. One person wrote, "I want our teachers to feel empowered and encouraged so that they may in turn empower and encourage the precious children that they teach. Teachers are the backbone of our school system, they are on the front lines, and they should be heard." To state the obvious, another person wrote, a councilwoman, "The health of our schools and their workplace environment improves the vigor of our entire community." There's many, many more. But we need a culture shift, is what I think everyone is kind of coming together to say. And I feel that until we find a real positive working relationship between the teachers and the administration, we're never going to really be able to excel as a district. And so that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
Hi.
Could you state your name, just because I didn't want to mispronounce your name?
Sure. Nobody gets it right. Excuse me, Lauren Murrage. Is that too loud? No, I'm mad. Okay. Hi, my name's Lori Murrage, I have two children in the district. My husband and I invested everything we have here in Beacon in 2011. We moved here right around the time the district had hired a new superintendent from Fort Lee, New Jersey. We came from New Jersey. We were very optimistic about our children entering the school system. From the moment I settled here in Beacon, I've been talking to parents about the schools, asking questions, getting opinions, mostly listening. I knew I would start getting more involved once my kids were old enough to enter school. My oldest is in pre-K at Sergeant right now, we're very happy. I've only been attending the board event meetings since August, but I've been to most meetings since that time. I've learned new acronyms, I've gotten quite an education about what the state of New York is doing, and I'm standing here today to share just some observations I had. At one of my first meetings, Dr. Walkley, he gave a very sobering report on our high school, its focus status, and the areas where we need to show improvement. He spoke extensively about rigor, and how our classes needed more of it, as did the efforts of our teachers and students. This is probably redundant to most of you, but I did later learn that there is an educational definition of rigor, which involves creative thinking, complex problem-solving, stuff of that nature. At the same meeting, I watched parents make comments of outrage regarding the teacher transfers, asking for explanations. Over subsequent meetings, I have become concerned to learn about Beacon's low APPR rates, and how that seems to have been mishandled somehow. I've grown an increasing sense of dismay over how our district has approached programming for the arts, especially in relation to the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation, lost or underutilized BOSI's contracts, money being misspent or not spent when it could be going towards increasing programming, et cetera. Lately I'm hearing about missing or late book orders. I've watched the approval of expensive consultants, I've heard about some positive results, but I'm also thinking, how many new teacher salaries that money could have gone toward, especially when there are disparities between the elementary schools and art and music staff positions, which I think is a real issue. I've walked the district, I've watched the district's responses to many of the concerns of stakeholders, and I often walk away more confused than I came in. Honestly, I'm seeing many serious issues brought up at meetings, some of which are going unacknowledged in your responses. I've had to do my own research, and I've gotten help from other parents, actually, to help me understand our status with the state and their increasingly convoluted methodology, which I think we can all admit is very confusing. The rest of my time, really, has always been spent talking to people, other parents, friends who are teachers in other districts, others like me, who are doing their research to learn more about what the state is doing to public education, how our district is holding up during difficult times. I've learned about some inspiring moves that other districts have made to get themselves out of focus status. I've read a recent statement written by the New Pulse Board of Education, rejecting the criteria by which the state is attempting to evaluate their schools. I read in the local paper recently, Hal Dean gave a detailed explanation of the daily duties of their teachers on special assignment. I've learned examples of how healthy school districts operate, and integral to this operation is leadership with vision. In this vision, districts are spending their funds on increasing programming to create an interconnected curriculum. This vision includes challenging the state mandates, and therefore protecting teachers and students. This vision also includes districts creating a culture of open communication and outreach with its parents and stakeholders, especially in districts where poverty is a factor, which I know ours is as well.
I just had to ask you, can you wrap it up?
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Thompson, at the last board meeting I attended, in your comments about, we were talking about the previous superintendent searches, you spoke about how Beacon has had difficulty attracting talent. You said, "People are not running to Beacon, because we're not financially able to provide a top-tier salary." This same explanation was given in regards to the HR director's search. So I had a lot of conversations with people about that, and what I learned was not that people think Beacon's salaries are terrible, but Beacon's reputation is kind of terrible. I was told that Beacon is a place where talented administrators are known to avoid, because it's known as a dysfunctional district. I even heard Beacon called "the little district that could, but then didn't." And this was the most disheartening news of all, I'm assuming you're just as disheartened to hear that as I am. Beacon, yes, is a district that hasn't had consistent leadership, yes, it's a district whose students have learning gaps, yes, it's a district who can't pay top dollar, but has great teachers and a unique diverse population and increasingly proactive community. What I'm asking you then is this, how are you, as the Beacon City School Board, going to apply the necessary rigor to once and for all address the inherent dysfunction in our lack of vision in our administration that is clearly keeping us from living up to our full potential? Thanks.
Ryan?
How's it going? My name's Ryan Habers, I'm a parent and taxpayer here in Beacon. And I just, I wanted to echo what Joan and Flynn said, this is regarding the petition that Gretchen Larson-Walberg submitted. And I just, just a few comments from the petition, people that had signed, and there's really pages upon pages of comments. So I just wanted to speak to a few of those. "My firstborn just started pre-K, and I've not heard anything good about the district in a long time. Having gone through Beacon City Schools myself, I want to see this change." Here's another, "Mutual respect is crucial to education, and that means respect for the right to be heard and taken seriously." Here's a few more. "Regardless of the reasoning behind recent administrative decisions, it must surely be obvious by now that an administration that does not show respect and professionalism towards the teachers is in need of a serious course correction. Please stand by Beacon's teachers." "As a stakeholder in the BCSD community, I'm advocating for a relationship of meaningful collaboration and mutual respect between the superintendent of schools and the Beacon Teachers Association. It is my hope that this petition will move the BOE to take appropriate action." And one more. "I'd like to be able to send my child to local public school when he's old enough, but everything I'm reading and hearing suggests that this is not the best choice. Please make this the kind of school district I can feel comfortable sending my child to." Thank you for your time.
Gillian?
Yep, Gillian Romkellawan, parent of two in the district. At the last board event meeting, the principal from Glenham gave a wonderful report about what was going on at their school. I also learned from their librarian about the amazing STEM projects, that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics projects, that she's implementing with the students. While all of this is happening in Glenham, JB, Forestill, and Sergeant are sharing both a librarian and an art teacher. In library class, instead of creating buildings out of spaghetti or marshmallows, my daughter is doing coloring sheets. How is this fair? Why do Forestill and Sergeant, which by the way is the second largest elementary school, have to share teachers? Why is the curriculum not the same throughout the entire district? At one elementary school, students might receive music twice in a six-day cycle, at another one, they receive art twice. What is the district going to do to ensure that all elementary students are afforded the same opportunities, regardless of which school they go to? And the last question, "Since ensuring adequate and equal facilities is essential to meeting the needs of our students and community, what has been your experience with bond elections? And please describe your specific responsibilities and results." Thank you.
John Burns?
John Burns, president of Beacon Teachers Association. Those of you that know me know I'm not usually nervous when I speak, but I know when the rest of the teachers say this, they'll feel the same way that I do. Then I'm tremendously humbled by the amount of support that we are shown by the parents group, and on behalf of all the teachers that work in Beacon, I just want to say, thank you. In June, I'll have thirty-one and a half years as a teacher and a coach, and I've been blessed to have forty-five years of working with children, our most valuable natural resource. It's difficult for me to come to these board meetings, because it seems to me, and a lot of other people, that many of you have forgotten why we're here, it's for the kids. And I can no longer in good conscience sit here and listen to the superintendent tell everyone how well she is working with the BTA, when nothing could be further from the truth. For despite the superintendent's recent claims otherwise, there are still textbooks that have not been provided for our students. The AP Biology textbooks have been on order since the end of the June 2014 school year, and the sixth grade social studies teachers have been trying to order textbooks for at least two or three years, and there are others. The superintendent has violated the contract by not providing mentors required by New York State in a timely fashion for our new teachers, mentors who were supposed to be appointed contractually not later than thirty calendar days after the start of the school year, adjustment with their mentees last Thursday, November 5th, almost two months after the start of the school year. This is an injustice to our new teachers, who are just starting out their careers in Beacon. And the BTA believes the superintendent intentionally put the appointment of mentors on the back burner so she could cement the TOSE positions. The TOSES were supposed to be voluntary if teachers asked for their help, but the superintendent has threatened that if we do not open up our classrooms to the TOSES, she will pull teachers from class for mandatory training. At a cost of approximately half a million dollars a year, it is obvious the superintendent has oversubscribed the number of TOSES. The superintendent has failed to pay six school psychologists for hundreds of hours for work they did last year on the Committee for Special Education, work that the superintendent agreed to pay for. The psychologists performed the work, submitted claims forms, which were signed off by their supervisor, and they were not paid. Central administrations will not even now answer emails about this situation. Central administrations will not even now answer emails about this situation. This is unconscionable. The superintendent has failed to address the critical shortage of substitutes. Substitutes often leave our district for higher-paying other districts. As is her style, the superintendent said, "Let's face the facts. The reason we have no subs is because the teachers take too many sick days." As the BTA president, I find this offensive. When I asked her which teachers has she spoken to about excessive activism or which teachers she has provided counseling memos to, there was no answer. The superintendent asked the BTA to sign a memorandum of agreement on a morning, to move a morning physical education class to the afternoon. I said, "Send it to me and I will sign it." For two weeks, I sent emails, and they responded by, "We're waiting on the lawyer." I received the MOA, and the superintendent expected me to sign it and return it in one day. This passive-aggressive way of doing business is the same way the superintendent dealt with us on the proposed APPR. Does the superintendent not understand that the teachers want a well-vetted APPR, especially in light of the fact that, once again, the government's put forth a document that is heavily weighted against teachers? And is our hesitancy in signing the proposed APPR a mystery to the superintendent when it was she and the ex-BTA president that were the architects of the last APPR, which resulted in approximately 70% of our teachers being rated ineffective? The list of transgressions, I'll be done in a minute. The list of our transgressions that the superintendent has perpetuated against the Beacon teachers is so long it would be exhaustive to cover them all here tonight. Make no mistake, the BTA is at a crucial juncture in our relationship with the superintendent. The BTA leadership asked me twice a month to try and work collaboratively and improve the district. The superintendent said, "Let's stay with once a month." I offered the superintendent my cellphone number and said, "Call anytime." The superintendent replied, "You have my office number." I doubt very much that the superintendent only spoke with the past BTA president once a month.
Mrs. Burns, you're out of line.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, we are at an impasse. Our district is not performing well according to New York State. It would be a disaster for the district to go into receivership. You need us, Mrs. Thompson, and we want to work together. Thank you.
All I ask is that we respect each other as we speak at the podium. Any person that went beyond their three minutes, I've asked them to wrap up what they're speaking about. I did not ask Mr. Burns to stop his speech. I was asking him to wrap it up. The fact that he wished to go well beyond four minutes, longer than anyone else, and to insist upon not responding to my request to stop is disrespectful. It is against everything the board has talked about as we talk about board comment. All that this Board of Education asks for is the mutual respect. We respected to listen, even though you pinpointed a person and we asked that that not happen any longer. I asked you to please stop, and you told me you'd finish in a moment. Now, perhaps some feel as though that deserves an applause. I do not think that it does. Of course, this district needs teachers. Of course, every child needs the best teacher that they can have stand before them. And of course, as a mother of three, I, as well as everyone in this room, wish to have the best teacher stand before my children and every other child in this district. But this lack of respect is not necessary in this arena, and to applaud that, I think is poor taste. Meredith Hewer.
I'll be super short. I was wondering about the technology grant, and I thought that there was going to be a workshop about it. I'm wondering if you have a date for that workshop? And I was also wondering, with the approval of the waiver, how that changes the APPR for this year, and if that changes the role of the IST in charge of educating our teachers with the 3D-12D. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Gretchen Larson-Walbrink?
Good evening. Gretchen Larson-Walbrink. I am a parent in the district. I have two children at Sargent. I have a couple of things. First, I'd like to observe that I see our board unable to act and follow through on certain things that they would like to accomplish. And some of that I see as not really understanding Robert's Rules of Order and how to move things forward in a meeting. I would love to see something happen with a meet and greet, and would love for that to maybe happen in a 10-minute recess that I think someone on the board could motion for that to happen. Christine Galvo at the last meeting shared that she would like to reach out to teachers. She read the 65-page BTA contract, and she found a contractual agreement and stated that she would like to invite the BTA to come and meet with the board. I see it noted in the minutes, and I would like to know if that has made it onto the agenda and if the board is going to move on that. According to Robert's Rules of Order, the president has discretion when moderating a meeting. Policy is put in place to provide for a general framework, but a moderator may use discretion. I find it highly disturbing that the president of the teachers' union, who was voted in by teachers, is not afforded a few more moments to speak.
Clarice Ali?
Clarice Ali, parent in the district. Dr. Walkley, at the last meeting, you addressed a concern I had about the benefit of consultants hired for this district and whether or not there was staff buy-in. You redirected my question to Ms. Kellogg, who responded that she had received some emails from staff members about how helpful one consultant, Steph Harvey, had been. But perhaps I should explain, I did not mean to imply that consultants cannot ever be helpful. I guess I'm just wondering, in fact, we actually heard tonight that Steph Harvey has been helpful to the staff at Roundbow. So I guess I'm just wondering if, given some of the basic needs in this district, like textbooks that are missing, we just heard, you know, 10 weeks into the school year and there are still no AP Biology books or sixth-grade world history books, and the book orders were placed, signed for, and delivered to the central office last school year. IEPs are still out of compliance, and one big concern is that there aren't enough, if any, substitute teachers in this district because this district still does not pay a competitive rate. And so, teaching assistants are being pulled out of classrooms to sub, leaving their teachers Full-time teachers like art and library are not in place in all the schools. So I guess I'm wondering, are these basic needs perhaps more deserving of the money spent on consultants than a few days of reading or writing workshops, which often pull teachers out of the classroom and may not be very helpful to people who've been teaching for years and are already masters of their craft? Steph Harvey Consulting for 31 days of reading workshops totaled $660 an hour for a total of $123,000. Doug Ricketts at $800 a day for 25 days of reading workshops is $20,000. And I understand that you were using grant money to pay for these consultants. So my question is, could you please explain if this grant money must be specifically used for professional development, or if this almost $150,000 could potentially be used to meet some of the basic needs in this district that I just mentioned? And if the money must be used for staff development, are there alternative means that are perhaps less costly or alternative programs, like the Calico Ball, for example, which would only cost this district a measly $6,000 in comparison? Relatively, I have some more questions. Who does the grant writing for this district? How much grant money has been received this year for specific programs like bully prevention? And how has the money been spent? Do you know which bully prevention programs are in place at each of the schools? I'm also curious about how much Beacon received in Race to the Top funds. I also, I believe we are classified as a high-needs district, and therefore we receive extra funds from the Excel program. How much did we receive last year, and how were the funds allocated? And in light of what happened a few minutes ago, I have a question for Melissa Thompson. Can you please define what you feel the role of the BTA president is, or what it should be, if it is not to provide checks and balances on the district administration? Thank you.
Jan Stark?
Good evening. Jan Stark, taxpayer. I've been an educator spanning five decades. I guess that makes me old. I've taught elementary, middle school, and high school. I have been an administrator at all three levels as well. I came to this community 27 years ago, and my wife and I married, as an AP at Roundbow Middle School, and have seen a lot of things go on in this district, some good and some bad. So after months of attending board meetings and hearing the same things over and over again about teacher transfers, TOSEs, and a lack of respect being shown to teachers, I cannot in good conscience sit by without commenting. As members of the Board of Education come and go, so do the issues. In the 80s and early 90s, we went through a major downturn. A lame duck superintendent, a poor superintendent, and a dysfunctional board. Then we had a long period of calm consistency and stability. During that time, only one budget failed. Since Mr. Cheseley's retirement, we haven't had the consistency that is needed to keep the district stable until now. You have often heard me talk positively about our administrators and teachers. Last year, while waiting for the board to make a decision about the superintendent, I talked about the need for leadership. While it is true that we have some good administrators and teachers and are capable, and they are capable of many things, like our students, they need the direction only a permanent superintendent was able to provide. Since we had so many superintendents come and go, that direction was left up to the individual buildings. I believe now, as I did last fall, that Dr. Walkley is the one to bring it all together, even with the kicking and screaming that is going on. So let me talk about transfers for just a moment. It's something new in education. Most superintendents would not even have met with the teachers being moved. They just would have been moved. As a rule of thumb, building principals are part of the process. I believe this to be the case here as well, and they should stand up and admit it. Principals have moved staff within their own buildings as well, and there hasn't been this outcry. The special education teachers in this district have moved almost on a yearly basis by the former director of special education, but again, there has been no outcry on this either. TOSEs are also important to the continued professional development of teachers. To question the qualifications of one individual is horrendous. The question was raised by a parent, how can a PE teacher help an English teacher when it's not their area? The same way, an administrator that was a school psychologist, or a science, or math teacher would. An experienced educator knows good teaching when it is taking place, and there are administrators and teachers that surrender to the board, and they know I speak the truth. Finally, I want to say something about respect. My parents taught my sister and I that respect is a two-way street, that you need to show respect in order to give it, in order to receive it. I have not seen much respect being given by the public or some teachers lately. We just saw an example of that tonight by the behavior, of that behavior, when that behavior would not be accepted in that own teacher's classroom, or our BTA president or not. At previous board meetings, the new president of the BTA read a statement and said that the teachers agreed with it. We saw it the last meeting, that was not true. We also saw it again tonight as well. Another part of respecting the board is addressing your interest to the board. At last meeting, a parent was allowed to turn and talk to the audience while others were told they could not do that. The rule was applied to all equally.
Thank you, Jan. Mihal Mark?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mihal Mark. I'm a parent of one child at Sargent Elementary. I'm here tonight. I had one question, but I think I might have five now, sorry. I would like to ask Dr. Walkley about the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, the DCEP. It's featured on the homepage of the Beacon City School District website, on the right-hand side. And it is my understanding that that is the plan we're currently following and that it was submitted to the state on July 31, 2015. I just wanted to confirm that. Now, I was wondering, I saw something on Facebook that there isn't anyone to help the seniors do the yearbook, so I was wondering about that, if we can get someone to do that, because I have a second grader, but it was expressed on Facebook. I also had a question to the board members that are voting tonight about the various consultant agreements, oops, I'm doing the thing, Engineering by Design, Carly's Crusade. I just want to make sure that everybody is reading those agreements and that everybody knows how much money is going to each one of those things before we sign them. I believe tonight it's Engineering by Design, Carly's Crusade. There is one more on the agenda. I just want to make sure that everybody here that is voting on things is reading them ahead of time. Thanks a lot.
We've reached the end of the list of those that wish to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we go to answering questions?
I'm a parent, I mean, I can just say tonight, but just from observation.
How about stating your name first?
Oh. Kristin Flynn, parent of children in the district. I feel like one thing that we should address a little bit is that the idea of respect doesn't always come forward in sort of a neat and tidy box when you're dealing with hard issues about which people are passionate. My parents do talk me about respect, but I feel like maybe the way that I was taught is about engagement, expecting more, being pushed to reach your full potential, to talk about problems, you know, care loudly at each other. So I think that, I think this is kind of a misrepresentation in a way of what So I think that, I think this is kind of a misrepresentation in a way of what, I, that, I mean, I can come up here and speak softly and say much harsher things. I think some, some people can emote a little bit more, but I think we're all adults, and certainly in our lives, we've encountered hard, you know, situations where we've had to work through something, and we can see through the passion and find the, you know, the nugget in there where we can work together. And I, I'm going to make a plea for that again. I think that what the BTA president was bringing forward was valuable feedback. Maybe it didn't sound the way we wanted it to sound, or maybe it was a little louder, or maybe it was a little harsher, but it's still important, and it's still an extremely important part of our education community. And whatever opinions we might have about the person, or, you know, the message is still there, and you have to sort of dispassionately absorb that. And then, I'd also say that there's sort of an irregularity about, the first speaker went on at length mentioning names and paid tribute, and that was okay, but in his bringing up a name, I think that that was considered, you know, inappropriate. And I just want to say, nobody runs for a leadership position because they're seeking anonymity. You know you're gonna, you know, your name is gonna be put out there. It just comes up. People like or dislike your decision. Certainly, all of you are aware of this now too, so I don't even know what my point is now. But I think that, I think we're all, we all want the same thing in the end. And I think that we can't keep discussing how we talk to each other anymore, because it's really exhausting. We can figure it out. We should try.
The first speaker was Mary Ann Cirillo. Thank you for your comments. The second speaker was Joan. She talked about a petition. She made a request to the board, but did not ask a question. Flynn Larson referred to comments and did not ask a question. Lori.
Burris.
Right, no, I was just looking for the, the information here. She also gave information, but I don't think there was a question. What was it?
How are, how are you, as the Beacon City School District, going to address the obstacles preventing us from being a district that, that's not a focus district?
So, what makes us a focused district? Some of that data, that information has been shared, and Mr. Saltish shared some information this evening about other information he had that makes us a focused district. What makes us a focused district is that we either do not show enough adequate progress according to the state set by targets, in the past that we don't test 95% of our students, and, and/or a district does not meet graduation rates. We also need to make improvements and not have a wide gap of achievement between different groups of students. So when you don't have those, some of those things, all of those things, one of those things working for you, you become a focused district. It's based on a state formula, whether we agree with it or not. What are we doing to address it? You've heard lab plans, you've heard about the high school plan, and that we are doing a three-year plan, working with the state right now, and the DCEP plan is posted and reviewed by the state. So those are things that we are doing. And all of the programming that you've heard about, those are things that we are doing to change our status from a focused district to a district in good standing. The next speaker, Ryan, made a number of comments about the petition, but he did not ask a question. Gillian asked about the difference in curriculum between schools. That's a goal of any district, is to articulate your curriculum, align your curriculum across the district. In this district, that, that process has not taken place in the past. It has in some areas, but not all areas. So there are areas still where there is an articulation need and an alignment need for What is our experience with bond elections? And I'm looking for Amberi.
Her concern, I have her concern about the teachers sharing between.
Right.
The forestal and sergeant.
So, somebody made the statement, may have been the speaker or a different speaker, that at the elementary level, there are shared teachers for several different subject areas. So, the amount of time that a teacher spends in a building is based upon the number of classes that are in that building. And I have spoken to the principals of the shared buildings, and in this district, there is a long history of this music and art situation, where in some schools, there is more music, and in other schools, there is more art. And it, what is the district's plan to take care of that? In the past, for example, for music, there has been one teacher who was dedicated to instruments at the elementary level, and then another person that was dedicated to the choral part of music. And that is the intent of the district to have a model like that. Again, the other question is around art, and making sure that there is enough FTE, enough art, so that each of the schools look the same. The question was, what is the experience with bond elections?
I wasn't sure what that question meant. Is that, is that a capital project bond?
Is that a capital project bond?
It was Gillian that was asking that question.
Gillian.
Gillian, she's behind the podium, I can't see her.
I'm assuming yes.
She's assuming yes.
Sorry, this is a question from somebody else.
I, I mean, I can make a general statement. Capital projects that we have put forward have been successful. The capital projects that we have put through in the last 10 years have been successful, so we are continuing, we are in the process of finalizing our last capital project, and we're hoping to come forward in the near future with another proposal.
Next speaker was Mr. Burns. I'm not going to get in a fighting match with Mr. Burns, I'm just going to say that Mr. Burns, you, all of your information has a twist to it. And, you know, I have emails where I have given you information, you and Mrs. Keough, about things that you thought was helpful. And what I really said was, let's see if we have agenda items for twice a month or once a month. There's information that I've been waiting for you, from you, for six weeks, and I still don't have it. And I could also go on, but I don't think that that is productive. I think what's productive is working collaboratively. And I think that that's what needs to happen. And so I invite you and Mrs. Keough to continue to work with me and Mrs. Kellogg, and any, anyone else, in a collaborative manner. And certainly, we can take a look at some of the things that you brought up, and take a look at the facts and information around those statements that you have made. Ms. Corironi, could you please address the question around the technology grant and the date for a presentation?
After our last meeting, I did have a conversation about the technology grant to get the status. And I, I was told that, I watched a couple of webinars, there's not really any final information. So the board workshop at this point wouldn't be useful, because we don't have a lot of information on how to move forward. The state is trying to still complete the way we do the process. But what I can tell you is, we did have to complete a survey, which we have done, we have submitted to New York State, it has been accepted, which is the first phase of this project. So the only way we can continue is to just continue through the committees to finalize the technology plans and how we want to move forward. And the committee currently is comprised of the tech director, administration, and teachers. We have had some board members voice that they want to be part of that, which we are going to then open up to parent representatives and board members to try to move forward. So the date of the workshop is still a little determined until we can get a little bit more formal information to go forward.
The other, the other thing about the technology grant is about how the state has given or not given information. Could you say a little bit about that?
We have, we have gotten very little information from New York State on actually how to spend the money. I did mention last time at the meeting that a lot of the.
We can hear you.
Okay. A lot of the information that, that has come forward, we have already in this district. So I, you know, a lot of it has to do with the back end of the technology, so we're trying to wait for a little bit more further clarification on how we can move forward, and how we can utilize the money that's allocated. The money, the $2 million that's allocated to Beacon is still, is available, and when we get the guidance part, we will finalize it and bring it forward to the board.
Thank you. The next speaker made a number of comments around Robert's Rules, Meet and Greet, some other items as well. I didn't see a question in her comments.
I'm going to answer those questions at the end.
The next speaker was Clarice, and one of the things that she did talk about was the ordering of textbooks. If you want to.
The status of textbooks. The AP Biology books were ordered. And so when I run the office tomorrow, I will have someone check the status, but they were ordered the day after the board meeting. And as far as the social studies books in the middle school, they are in the process of trying to find the most late, the most recent edition. They were put together, the proposal was put together and brought forward at the end of last school year. So it was a time between one budget here and another, so they were delayed a little bit, but we are in the process of finalizing those as well. Those are the only books that I am aware of that are outstanding at this point.
But I thought the statement was made that books were delivered and signed for, but they don't have.
I, I don't know what that comment means. I can look into it, I don't know, you know, if we sign off on textbooks delivered in central office, we would deliver them, we would have the courier deliver them to a school, so I am not clear as to why I wanted to say.
Someone brought up, I think it was Clarice, brought up the question around substitutes. I have been in contact with the other districts in Dutchess County. In particular, I talked to the one district that pays the most, and they are telling me that they also have a shortage of substitutes. They also have a shortage of teachers. And they, I was told that they are, it's a term, they are warehousing students in, in the auditorium. So for example, they do not have enough teachers or enough subs, so they put two, three, even up to four classes of students in a auditorium, and they use it as a study hall. So in discussing this problem with some of the other districts, a possible thought from the group is that four years ago, the APPR came into place, as well as tests that teachers need to take now to get a teacher license. Those tests are particularly rigorous, and they are difficult to pass. And therefore, four years ago, people who thought they were going into education did not continue in education. These assessments are quite costly, and usually when a person takes them, like they might pass one part of it, but there are other parts that they need to pass, and they have to retake and retake the test, and they have to pay for it every time they take the test. This may be an indication of the loss, of the amount of substitutes and teachers that are available in this area. Don't know, haven't done a study, but that was a possible cause that was discussed by a group of educators, I believe as early as last week. And we are bringing a proposal to the board to change the, the pay for substitutes. We were tied, I guess is the word, we were paying the same amount of money that one of the very nearest district paid, and we would like to raise the pay for substitutes, and that will be at the next board meeting we will make that. But even the district that pays over $100 a day for substitutes has a shortage of substitutes. So it is a big problem in this area for all of us right now. There was a question around grant monies. Grant monies always have guidelines about what grant money can be spent for. So for example, if you wanted to have a behavior program with one of the grant monies, the one program that the state supports is PBIS. And therefore, in that particular grant, we allocate money for PBIS. So there are guidelines about how that money can be spent. The money in the grants that we are using for professional development cannot be spent for the Calico Ball, cannot be spent for certain, certain teachers, et cetera. It must be used in certain ways. So yes, there are guidelines, and there are quite a few. There was a question about the Race to the Top Funds.
I, I don't have that money available. I can get that and bring it to the next board.
Right, and, and the other one was the Excel.
Excel, I believe that Excel, being a high-need district, we received Excel money, which was several years ago, was used directly for capital projects. We do have some money available to us that if we were to go out for another capital project, we could use the rest of it, but it's only a couple hundred thousand left. We were able to utilize most of it to keep the tax lev. We were able to utilize most of it to keep the tax levy less to that.
There was a question about what is the role of the BTA president? And I think-
That was a question.
Okay. Mr. Stark made some comments, and I didn't see a question in his comments. The question about the DESEP, is it on the homepage? I believe it is.
She said it was. She said it was.
It was submitted to the state on July 21st and accepted and is currently being implemented in the district.
It was submitted to the state. The state has just given us some feedback on that particular DESEP that Mrs. Kellogg is now taking a look at. And that will be addressed to the state.
Does that feedback you share with the public?
I'm looking at Mrs. Kellogg. I'm sorry. We don't have it in front of us today, but we certainly can share information at another meeting.
Yeah, we, I don't have that feedback in front of me. That's something that I would like to share. We would bring back a committee together to take a look at it. Perhaps even, you know, expand the committee that was originally brought to it. So we are going to be taking a look at that. We just got the feedback. So, you know, it just came the other day. And that is, as I mentioned, when I first presented the DESEP and DESEP for the high school, these are living documents. These documents have been shared with the folks that are implementing the plans in the schools, certainly. And, you know, we will have opportunities for further feedback. With regard to the high school SEP plan, we are participating in the DITSD Diagnostic Tool for School District Effectiveness, PLC, Professional Learning Community at the state level. And as part of that association, we are able to develop a plan that's a three-year plan. So that really makes more sense to us to build on the work that we're already doing and then just growing from there. So that is still, that's very much beginning phases right now in the PLC group. And more information will be shared with the community as we go a little further with that process. So it's a multi-tier kind of process going through these comprehensive improvement plans. And there will certainly be opportunities for the communities, community members to, you know, learn about it and feedback from parents as well. So that's to be coming forward.
The last speaker made some comments. She ended with "we can figure it out." And I didn't see a question there. So I will pass.
Okay. There were a few questions aimed in my direction. And my first thought would be, many of you have attended the policy committee meetings where we talked about public comment repeatedly at multiple meetings. And the number one thought of the board, and not specifically myself, but the board, was respect. And it has been brought to my attention on many occasions as representative of the board that actually speaks, that I'm not tough enough, that I don't demand respect, that I let people speak too long and about too many topics, and that I need to do a better job of that. So if at times I feel, you feel as though that I have demanded respect when you didn't think it was warranted, many times, it's because I'm, my attempt at meeting the needs of this board. We talked long and hard at the policy committee meeting regarding public comment, and that was the number one thought. Gretchen asked the question regarding, or made the comment regarding Christine's comment at our last meeting. And Christine read a part of the contract that indicated that within the teacher's contract, and it's also as part of the administrator's contract, that that unit has the opportunity, once per year, to request a meeting-
Per semester.
I'm sorry?
Per semester.
Per semester. I apologize. Twice per year. They have the opportunity to request at any time to meet with the Board of Education to discuss whatever needs they may have or concerns that they wish to have addressed. This Board of Education has never denied any of those requests. In my tenure on the board, those requests have come forward from both units. And both times, those meetings have happened and have been very productive. The Board of Education is not planning to invite that type of a meeting because that is part of their contract and they are entitled to it. If the teachers at any time wish to request that meeting of the Board of Education, I have no reason to believe that this Board of Education does not wish to entertain that meeting. But at this time, the board will not be taking an action on that point. Many of you spoke to this petition. I've read many of these comments prior to coming to the meeting tonight, over the last couple of weeks, actually. And, you know, and I echo many of the comments that are there. Each of our children in this district need teachers to stand before them, to engage them, to embrace them, and to guide them. To think that anyone here sitting at this table does not wish that for every child is sorely mistaken. I don't know. Clarice asked the question of what I felt the leader of the VTA, what I felt of that role. Certainly, checks and balances, you know, that's my background. Checks and balances are always good in a respectful way. I'm not, you know, I didn't stop conversation. I certainly allowed far longer than the normal three minutes per speaker. I attempted to allow that conversation to finish. But to have the grandstand when I asked for it to stop and then to continue as he went to his seat, to me, is beyond disrespectful. And it's not necessary. Kristen made a comment about respect and that we can all learn to get along and that, you know, we may feel differently about people or have different thoughts. And she's right. And I've spoken to Kristen outside of this meeting, and I know where she was going with that comment. And, you know, we're all here as a check and balance. This Board of Education is here as a check and balance of the superintendent and the running of our school district. Certainly, the president of the VTA has a responsibility to provide that as well. But if we can all do it with respect to one another, wouldn't we be in a better place? And my comments as he walked away were, is that the example you wish to lead? Right? I mean, I grew up in a family that had many children, and the one thing that was always said was, you know, lead by example. Lead by, be the example that you wish to set. Lead by example. I tried to do that on this Board of Education every day that I sit in this chair and every day that I walk through this community. And I wish the same for each person in a leadership role. Dr. Walkley, would you like your superintendent's report?
We are starting the Carlys Crusade. Carlys Crusade is a group that responded to the question about how can children be safe? And we have set up presentations right now from the elementary to, through the middle school. And there are two parts to the presentation. There is an assembly where students learn about the best way to be safe is to use your brain. Use your brain, use your mouth, know where cameras are, and, you know, run away if you see danger to someplace that's safe. And then they practice those skills in a second session during a phys ed class. There is a Martin Luther King essay contest coming up. And I'd like Kenya to tell us a little bit about that.
So I am a member of the Southern Dutchess NOACP. And on Saturday, I have a Freedom Fund luncheon. And they will celebrate this January 18th, 2016, their 38th annual Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration. It has many components to it, but one of the components that they would love for the district to get involved in, as well as the march, is that the students of the district participate in their third annual Southern Dutchess Community Martin Luther King Essay Contest. I do have for Dr. Walkley all of the information that was provided to me by Ms. Bonnie Champion. And so she has asked that I pass that information on. It is their hope that the number of students increase from last year to this year and that people come out to all of the events they have scheduled on that day. Thank you.
And we actually have received that information. And the information has been shared with principals. And they will be giving me their plans for the essay contest and, you know, how they're going to implement that. Also, just want you to know, on January 18th, this group also, you used the word march, but Mrs. Champion called it a singing parade. It's a parade that was started by Pete Seeger in recognition that it seemed like at that time that Martin Luther King Day was turning into just another day off, a holiday, a day to be off. And he wanted to make sure that the celebration of Dr. King's life was not just another holiday. So there is a singing parade, and if you're interested in being part of it, just, there is, there's going to be a lineup at Springfield Baptist Church at 9:30 on January 18th. And anyone can be a part of that parade. She told me that last year, there were actually 2,000 people. And the parade, before the, when the parade ended, there were people still starting. So it's quite something to see. So you might want to come down, and you can also get a free continental breakfast at the church. So it sounds like a great time. On November 12th, that is the evening that we, one of the things that's going on that particular evening is we are providing guidance for elementary parents who would like guidance about the parent portal. And actually, any parent that is not on the parent portal that would like, you know, a little bit of guidance, you are welcome to come. It's going to be at the high school, starting at 7 o'clock. And there will be teachers there, trainers there, who will be glad to sit right down with you and make sure that you see how you can get into the parent portal. On November 11th, school is closed to observe Veterans Day and give thanks and honor all that have given so much for our freedom. The Grow Your Own program, that's the program for future teachers, for students, for future teachers. Ms. Jackson has recruited about 25 students in ninth and 10th grade. And we're really happy to see that many students, and hopefully, there may be more. Their first meeting, joint meeting with Maris College is tomorrow. Also, a reminder that the Parent Lifted Academy, that is a pilot at South Avenue that I spoke about last time, will be having a rollout session that will also be on November 12th at 7:00 PM at South Avenue School. The Spectrum Parent Group is also meeting on November 12th at 7:00 PM. Very popular evening. And that meeting is going to be here at the high school in room C128. And that concludes my report. Yes?
No, I just wanted the time before your own, it's like tomorrow at, and then I-
It's a meeting with the students, and I would, you know what? I don't have the actual time, but I believe it would be right after school.
I have a question. Were you going to put out on your forum as well and talk about future forum dates?
Thank you for asking me that. There was a forum last week, and Mr. Zoff, Mrs. Kellogg, and I had a great conversation for a while on that evening. There is another forum. This is the one forum that does have an agenda item. And that is going to be November 16th at 6:45 to 7:45. I'm sorry. That is at, from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the high school cafeteria here. And the purpose of that particular meeting-
November 16th is the board retreat.
Okay.
In the morning, is it?
No, no, but I'm sorry. November 17th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. In the high, right here in the high school cafeteria, there'll be a forum. And the purpose of the forum is to work with whoever comes to talk about other ways to communicate. On November 16th, in the morning at 6:45 to 7:45 AM at the district office, is an open forum. The next forum will be December 1st from 7:00 to 8:00 here in the high school cafeteria. That'll be an open forum. And the last one scheduled for right now is December 21st. That will be a morning forum at 6:45 AM at the district office. That is also an open forum.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
Yes. I'm sorry, I have a lot, but they're like pretty scattered. My theme of tonight is follow-through. So I'm going to be trying to follow-through on some of the stuff that we talked about in prior board meetings, but we may not have gotten to, or I'm looking for updates on stuff that I have received updates on and so forth. So the first one is the HR position. It seems like it's been a while since we heard any updates about the HR position and where it's gone, or are we still looking to fill it and so forth?
Cameri, go on.
An answer to your question, yes, we are still trying to fill it. We are struggling to get candidates that have the right certification. So for right now, people may have a wide variety of experience, both in the private sector and the public sector. But many of the candidates that apply do not have the correct certification. So we are in the process of going through again both the first round, the second round of resumes, just to make sure that we haven't overlooked anyone. And if that turns out that we don't have someone, we may have to open it up again for the third time.
So we posted it twice, and we're still, you said we found a candidate?
I'm sorry?
We posted it twice, and we've interviewed, and we've done two interviews as well?
We posted it twice. We, the first round, we did three interviews, and most people did not have the correct certification. The second round, there is one candidate currently that has both the experience and the qualifications and the certification. And we're planning to interview that person sometime next week.
Do we have a job description for that as well?
Yes.
We do. Can you bring that to the next board meeting? And I believe it was Jillian that asked about, you know, teachers doing the same thing. I know that we've approved curriculum writing or curriculum mapping. We did that this summer, correct? So the teachers at each elementary level should be following that map?
In general, Mrs. Kellogg, in general, they were not curriculum mapping this summer. Do you want to speak a little bit about what the projects were?
We were working on curriculum. Most of the work was done at the secondary level avenue, and we're doing curriculum work around, you know, aligning with the modules, the Common Core Learning Standards modules. modules. They were doing content curriculum work. And that work has been, you know, they review with me periodically throughout the summer, and that work is completed. At the moment, I've had no more requests for additional curriculum work, but that's always, you know, a possibility.
Are we looking to map, do curriculum mapping for each grade level and each subject, or is that not something we're looking at?
That's not something we've really looked at seriously at the moment. So right now, we've been just, the Common Core Learning Standards, you know, we're just fine-tuning those at the elementary level, and they were just, we're keeping that, you know, pretty much whole at this point. At the secondary level, there hasn't been the request for me to do that, but that's always something you can put on the table. I, you know, can bring that up at the next coordinators' meeting, content coordinators' meeting.
There has been extensive curriculum mapping done in the past, and now there will be a need at the secondary level to change those maps. A lot of work was done with, we've been working with math, English Language Arts, because they're switching to the, the assessments are switching to the Common Core and taking from the modules what those teachers felt were essential.
I know that we approved some funding for the Athletic Handbook. I was wondering if the handbook has been revised, has it been handed out, has it been updated, has it been shared with the public?
Well, the handbook, we, what we can do is have Mr. Nemec come and share the handbook. It has not been shared with, that I'm aware of, unless he has shared it with athletic groups, but.
If you're looking at me, the, the last I knew, I was under the impression the committee was still finalizing, but that is may not be the most up-to-date information. But I'm not aware of any team receiving it yet.
Is there a deadline for that, or? And is it going to be implemented half-season for the winter, or is it going to be implemented for the spring, or are we going to wait until the 16th, 17th school year?
Well, I think that it would, the best way to implement it would be at the start of whatever season. So when a new season starts, if the handbook is ready, that would be the time to.
The Technology Smart Bond Grant, Tim Fashin reached out to me as per Anne Marie asking him to do so. So he emailed me, we had a nice conversation about the Technology Smart Bond Grant. So I told him, I said I would give a little bit background of our conversation, so he's aware that I'm going to be speaking upon it. So I asked him, you know, what's the status, where we're at, where we're going, what has been done, what needs to be done, what are we looking to do? So he says this is a good avenue, and he kind of told us what we have in place already, where we're pretty strong with our technology. He says our infrastructure is pretty strong, that we could accommodate one-to-one devices, which means that tablets or keyboards or, like a laptop for every kid, when I say one-to-one device. So he says the infrastructure is pretty strong. He is aware that the state has pretty broad guidelines about what the money can be used for. There is some leeway, but it hasn't been specific as to what they will approve or will not approve. So he says that there wasn't anything with the approval list. He, he did say to me that there's a technology committee and that there would be a subcommittee for the Smart Bond Act that would come out of that technology committee or be formed from that. He said that has not been formed yet. I did express interest on being a part of a technology committee, and I asked him if it would be opened up to parents and board members, and he said that he would get, sit back to Anne Marie about that, and, you know, we would see what we could do about that. So the other component of that was looking at what we could do ahead of time before the Smart Bond gets started. So I asked, has there, has it been parent surveys, has it been student surveys, has there been teacher surveys that have been done yet, and there haven't been? That's something that could be done before anything comes forth from the state, so I was asking him if we could get started on that. And he was pretty receptive to it, but just making out, making sure as to the technology that we're looking at will meet the needs of each, each level. So he was pretty optimistic, thinking that, you know, it would be a pretty good idea, he's excited about it. I think with the base technology that we have in Beacon, this could be a game changer as to taking us to the 21st century learning and not just using technology to find material, but using technology as a resource or a learning tool. So that was my update on the Technology Smart Grant. I don't know, is that anything different than what you heard?
That's perfect.
I heard from the Forest Hill parents that there may not be a pledge of allegiance going on in some classrooms, is that?
Mr. Wright, as part of their program, their PBIS program, was putting into place as part of the reward system, that students would be able to lead the pledge for all the other students. So there was a period of time through his transition that the pledge wasn't said, but it is said every day now in every classroom in the morning.
The last thing I'm going to talk about is the respect. Again, I think it's a two-way street. I think it's modeled, respect has to be modeled to everyone, and I do not agree with Mr. Burns' actions tonight. When he's asked to stop, he should have stopped. I think that, that is not respectful if someone's asking you to stop, because there is a procedure and policy that is in place that should be followed. But I also think that the board needs to show respect for the teachers and the union and vice versa. I could just point out that there was a conversation at our September 28th board meeting, and he was appointed on September 25th, and one of the parents asked the question. It stuck out my mind as, as that was going on. And Dr. Walkley commented saying that she was going to continue to work collaboratively with the union, but yet she didn't even acknowledge that Mr. Burns was sitting in the audience. She expressed it to Mr., Ms. Keough, who was still the vice president at that time. So, I mean, it would have been respectful to point out that he was the union president at that time and so forth. The other component was, Mr. Stark said that, you know, people were grandstanding, and it was grandstanding. I have called people out. I did talk to Ms. Thompson about that parent, and I said, we had a conversation about was it not addressing the board, or was it because it was kind of off to the side, the back wasn't to the board and so forth, and I have called people out on that. So we had a conversation after board meeting. I said, I think that, you know, there was a fine line there, not addressing the board, and I actually said, I feel that we should have addressed it. You know, the explanation that we had was that there wasn't good sound and that she was making sure, and I said that, that's not the purpose, it's to make sure to address the board. But if Ms. Springer was here today, I was going to ask her to please address the board, because I didn't think that it was correct.
Any other comments?
So Dr. Walkley, I think already addressed the yearbook concern, it will go through the process. I encourage parents that when you have issues or concerns, to bring it to the head office, get a name, the person that you're speaking to, and then bring your questions there. I think that a lot of the time, you know, social media is, is utilized to get answers to questions, and sometimes your frustration can build on both sides. So I'm not saying that you will always get answers when you call the board office, but I think that that should be your first course of action, so that you can get what you mean. I just wanted to say, I kind of just want to reiterate that, you know, Melissa, I think that you are trying really hard to enforce the policy. I sit there and those are hours spent that I choose to spend away from my family, so that I can ensure that we do right by the children and family of this district. I think that it's very difficult to try to stop someone who's being respectful in dialogue and asking a question and calling out versus someone who's yelling and being inappropriate. However, the policy does call for no answering, no responses to those people out in the, in the, in the audience. And so it's troubling, and sometimes you are faced with criticism because you attempt to answer people. And I think that the community needs to understand that we are only trying to enforce the policy, and so therefore, we should not answer any questions that are called out, whether they are appropriate or not. I just wanted to kudos to Ms. Kellogg and to Mr. Wright for the letter to the editor and the Beacon Free Press. I totally appreciate it. I'm trying to maneuver myself to get to each school, to try to do something there, and so just seeing that made me feel like I was there and well-informed, so I look forward to those things occurring more frequently. The National Honor Society, I just want to thank those students that came out, and I'm excited about peer tutoring, because the cost for tutoring is extreme. So there were some parents that expressed some concern on how you get that, and now everyone is informed. I'm excited again about the Grow Your Own, and my child is now interested in that program, thanks to Ms. Jackson. So I look forward to continued involvement in that area.
So I just wanted to thank Mr. Nemec for his fall sports awards. He's trying something new, and I appreciated that because there were only just the fall teams there, there was quite a bit more recognition for those athletes, whereas in the past, we try to do all three seasons at the same time, it gets really difficult to manage. And so I, he, I see that he is not still here, but I wanted to just thank him for his efforts, and I applaud him trying something new and trying to give each of those athletes some additional recognition.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved consent agenda, item 10.02 through 10.15.
Second.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Motion through, approve consent agenda, item 10.02 through 10.14, because we moved 1.5.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. May I have a motion to approve addendum item 11.01?
Motion to approve addendum item instructional personnel, item L through M.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion to approve agenda item 11.02.
Motion to approve addendum item, uh, hold on, I didn't change it. To approve the agreement with Carlys Crusades Foundation.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion for addendum, addendum item 11.03.
Motion to approve agreement with engineer by design.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yes, hold up, please. Dr. Walkley, can you just give an update as to what this is, so parents, so parents know and so forth?
Engineering by Design is a program that has been designed by engineers for students, and I believe they have levels from grades 3 through 12. We are starting at grade 6 this year with an exploring technology program. There are four, four units associated with an 18-week program. It is a STEM program, and it's, we're very excited about it at the middle school. The, there will be training for the teacher who will be implementing the curriculum. There will be a team of people at, at the building to support the teacher, including somebody from technology who will support the work of the STEM. It's a very hands-on program, and students are learning curriculum through doing rather than just sitting and reading and answering questions. So I would love to have the teacher come in a little bit later in the year and share some of the work that they're doing.
And cost-wise, very?
It's $1,730 for the full year to be a member of this, plus $150. And there may be some materials that we have to buy, not, not from this group, but to have, so that they can implement the curriculum. And then those materials could be used again and again, but as a startup. There may be some travel that we pay the trainers who come, who, who may be coming. We may do a combination of a couple days of the training right here in Beacon, and then maybe a couple of days of training through some telecommunication. And then there would be meals for those trainers. So it's a very cost-effective program and highly regarded by the state and engineers on the national level.
And even though it says a, even though it says a one-year contract, it's not, we're not just looking for it for this year, but it's something that we have to do a one-year contract with this?
Boards of education have certain contracts that they can do multi-year commitments, and there are some types of contracts that they can only do a one-year commitment. It is our intent, actually, this 6th grade group, we would continue the 6th grade and next year add the 7th grade. So this particular group of 6th graders would receive the full program through 12th grade, adding grade level each year as they travel up and maintaining, you know, the grade level, each grade level that has the program.
I was just asking, I, I thought they needed to know that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.